Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting, March 24th. And welcome our guest today. It is called Meeting Order. And everybody got a new item on their agenda. On your old business, we'll be talking about Kovach Park today. And I'd like to motion to adopt the agenda. Councilor Orlando, Councilor English, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Adoption of the minutes from March the 10th. Councilor Orlando, Council Salt, all in favor? Adoption of the minutes from the regular council meeting on March the 10th. Council Salt, Council Scott, all in favor? Announcements from the mayor. I have a fair number of announcements today there with me. Just you'll notice when you go outside that the tarts are coming off City Hall finally for the accessible entrance. Kudos to the staff for the work that's done and being done. Hope to get everybody moved down there and ramble through in mid-April. Mount Nick Pearson. There will be a report coming forward at the next council meeting on April 14th, 2015. Councilors on the Economic Development Committee have been working hard on this political issue. The CSRD has sent a letter to Minister Forrest requesting improvements to the process of public consultation. The province has fired the local government auditor for non-performance. The city of Revelstoke stepped up and offered to be the first cities to be audited in 2012, with the expectation that a report would be issued in 2030. This was a good idea, and it was just implemented badly. But councils still look forward to the report coming back to assist the new council in establishing a foundation moving forward. You will have a baseline measurement to compare to. The See Click Fix program was launched successfully yesterday. The program allows the residents of Revelstoke to report issues immediately to the city of Revelstoke. Using a smartphone via the city website, residents can receive updates and monitor status on request. The See Click Fix program will allow for greater public engagement and ease in communicating with the city, which is the 2015 objective of council moving forward. So we have two delegations today. The first one is Mr. Wayne Stebsky, who is the NDP candidate for Coopie, Columbia. He is the former mayor of Cranbrook and has a background in working for the Ministry of the Environment in his public life. So, Mr. Stebsky, would you like to speak to council?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship and council. Very much appreciate you making the time for me to be here today. I left English Bay in Vancouver about 6:30 this morning. I've often admired Revelstoke and the forward-looking initiatives that you have here, including, of course, the Community Forest, which was the first one that I was aware of. Your energy, community energy strategy, the fact that you actually have a social planner on staff, these are all things I envy and admire, both from my position with Ministry of Environment and as mayor of Cranbrook. So today isn't going to be very political. I just wanted to take a bit of opportunity to introduce myself to you. My association with Revelstoke actually goes back to 1974. I lived here for four months and I worked for Revelstoke Waste or National Parks. I was brought over to write a script, take photographs, and put together a state-of-the-art two-projector-canned slideshow on the natural and human history of Revelstoke place and park. That's where I learned Revelstoke really does have the largest snowplains in the world, right here in Revelstoke. To fast-forward a few years, from 2002 to 2009, I was the regional manager for the Ministry of Environment for the East and West Coopies. So I was responsible for provincial parks, so Blenkin and Martha, close to home here for you. But all of the parks in the East and West Coopies, I was responsible for fish and wildlife and for ecosystems. Had a multimillion-dollar budget and a large staff of offices in Cranbrook, Nelson, Revelstoke, the one-person office here, and in Invermere. So became quite familiar with the region and the values that we all hold. I've lived in Cranbrook now for 25 years, and I tell everybody, the reason that I live in the Coopies is because we have world-class scenery, world-class recreation, both motorized and non-motorized, and world-class wildlife. And I know that firsthand from my time traveling around the region. 2011 to 2014, I was mayor of Cranbrook, so I share your pain. There are many, many challenges that you face as municipal government, not the least of which, quite frankly, is things that get downloaded from federal and provincial governments that fall on your laps as councillors. And, you know, when you care about your community, and the only reason you're here and the reason I was there in Cranbrook is because I care about our community, you're always trying to figure out what to do with things that somebody else has dropped or lapped some other level of government. And the challenges that you face here, we all need and continue to need unrestricted infrastructure funding from the federal and provincial government. And by unrestricted, I mean that I mean money that you can put to your priorities here in Revelstoke, rather than having to meet a set of criteria as we often have had to do in the past. And there are also other things that affect us on a day-to-day basis, things like childcare. One of the proposals from the NDP government, of course, was a $15 a day universal childcare. Concerns around healthcare. For you here in Revelstoke, of course, the Trans-Canada Highway is a major concern, has been forever, you know, from when I lived here in the 70s right on to today. So that really does have to become a priority for the federal government. Forty-six deaths of 46, too many, if you really want to look at it. I've driven the highway many times and sometimes with a little more nervousness than other times, shall we say. So looking forward to some of the changes around speed limits as well, you know, that actually goes through, where the speed limits will be coordinated, the weather conditions are a major step forward. But we need to get the highway twinned right through British Columbia against certainly for Revelstoke Glacier. Other things, for about two years, I was the manager for the East Coopie Conservation Program, and that focused on private land conservation. And what I learned there were two things. One, how important ranchers and farmers are to conservation in the Coopies. And secondly is how little support they get from the federal and provincial government for, one of the things that's most important to all of us, and that's basically food, food practices. And I know you guys have a foods of food charter that you've adopted recently. It's great. We need to keep that focus on food, but we need to also provide more support to our farmers and our ranchers. And I learned that in my two years involved with private land conservation. So, you know, collectively, I've worked in municipal government, and so I do feel your pain on a daily basis. I worked at a regional level, quite familiar with what makes the Coopies special. And the phone started to ring for me in early December, people saying, "You've got to run federally." And so I sat down and wrote myself a letter, asking, "Why would I want to do this?" And the answer came back really quickly and really clearly to me. One, I truly believe in public service, and two, I'm really concerned about where Canada is going currently. That's as political as I'm going to get today, but I want to just keep it as a personal objective.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions for... Any questions? Okay.
I will be back here many times, so I look forward to seeing you again.
And I believe you're speaking this evening at the rec center, are you?
I don't know, not at the rec center, but I know on Vernon Avenue, if anybody wants to.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, if I could just ask a little out through, Your Worship, through the chair, just one question. You talked about Glacier and the highways and the federal portion. What do you think is to get down there?
Well, ultimately, coming through from Vancouver this morning, the signs are still there. Twin or divided highway right through to the Alberta border, that is where we have to get in the end.
Well, thank you very much for coming by this afternoon, and safe travels.
And thank you very much for making the time.
Thank you.
Our next delegation today is from the Revelstoke Museum and Archives. Kathy English is here, the curator, and she's brought some of her board members with the Rockhamwood members. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to sit today to present our annual report from Revelstoke Museum and Archives. I'm pleased to be joined by our board president, Jan Warhouse, and our treasurer, Laura Renee. I'd like to start with a little bit of history, just to outline the relationship between the museum and the city. The museum opened first in 1962 in a small space in a basement of the building that is now the Avalanche Canada Center. In 1974, the city of Revelstoke purchased for $1 the former post office building from the federal government and had it renovated for a new home for the museum. We have now been in this lovely heritage building for 40 years, and in the last few years have completed a lot of changes to make it work well for exhibit space, artifacts storage, and archives. I'd like to say that just in the last few years, we've moved out of the post office and into the museum. It was a long process, but I figured we're really on the right track. Our Heritage Garden was opened in 2004, when we transformed this former post office delivery lane into a beautiful downtown green space. The museum is governed by a nonprofit society, the Revelstoke Museum and Archives Association. As curator, I report directly to the board and am their employee. All of the museum staff are paid through grants, gift shop revenue, and earned revenue. Daria Kader, our office manager, and I are the two full-time paid employees, and we hire students and contract staff as funds allow. And of course, we also rely on that huge bank of incredible volunteers to do a variety of tasks for us. The museum currently has a five-year renewable contract with the city of Revelstoke covering the use of the building. We've requested that this be changed to a 10-year contract, which will allow us to access federal funding for upgrades such as an elevator. This is currently under review for city staff. You will see by our annual financial report that we did have a very good year. We have always been strictly responsible and managed our finances well. We were able to end our last fiscal year with a surplus, although this is not always the case. The surplus has allowed us to continue to pay our collections manager, Remi Sakiyama, who was instrumental in cataloging our artifact collection in our data management software program, and was in charge of reorganizing the collection in our new shelving system. We will be using the anticipated CBT Community Initiatives grant to continue to employ Remi this year. We've been in discussion with Laurie Donato to ensure efficiencies in the building operation. We will continue to do this. It is clear from our annual report that we are a great asset to the community in terms of our preservation of our history and in the many ways we find to share this history with residents and visitors alike through our programs and exhibits. We have just opened our new exhibit, Land of Thundering Snow, and launched a website with the same name. We believe that this project will increase the museum's profile and the community's profile as well, as we demonstrate Revelstoke's prominence in the field of avalanche history and research. We are proud to know that there are many people in the community who feel directly engaged in the museum and in our history. This can be seen through record numbers of participants at our Brown Bag History Talks and other events, and through the number of volunteers who are eager to help out in a myriad of ways. Our children's programs have been running for more than 15 years and are a great way of engaging young people in exploring our heritage. Just last week, we had 31 children at our spring break fun day, and it was fun, a little noisy, but fun. This spring, we will be publishing another book. Our two previous books, Reflections, Four Decades of Photographs by Earl and Del Dickie, and First Tracks, The History of Skiing in Revelstoke, have been very successful, both in earning revenue for the museum and in presenting our history in a very popular form. The new book, Brown Bag History, Revelstoke Origins, is based on the Brown Bag History Talks that I have been presenting for about 12 years, and we should be launching that in May or June of this year. A new exhibit scheduled to open in June of this year will explore Revelstoke's Aboriginal history. This is an important part of our community's past and one that needs to be covered in a more comprehensive manner than we have done up till now. This project is being funded by a grant from the Vancouver Foundation. We thank the city of Revelstoke for the continued support we receive and for the annual grant that provides us with important core funding for museum operations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Counselors, questions for Kathy today? No question. Oh, Counselor Orlando?
Thank you, Your Worship, through the chair. Kathy, I'm a big fan of the museum and had lots of chances over the years to interface with all the ways that you aid the community culturally and contribute to the cultural life of the community. But I wanted to ask you about, in terms of the museum as an economic driver, what are some of the ways in which you bring things into the community and contribute to the economic life of the community?
I think I've been in discussions for probably over 10, 15 years. In fact, probably going back to the 1980s when Revelstoke did the downtown revitalization. It was really a vision of seeing Revelstoke as a cultural heritage tourism destination. And I think possibly in the last few years, when we've put so much emphasis on Revelstoke as a tourist destination and a winter/summer outdoor recreation, we might have lost a little bit of focus on that aspect of Revelstoke as a cultural and heritage tourism destination. But I think that potential is always being here. I think with our museum and the other museums in town, the Art Gallery, I think that's where we can work together a little bit more to market that aspect of history or of Revelstoke and really show that it's just one of many reasons for people to come here. So I think we are a part of that. There's not so much in Revelstoke, but I know throughout the province, there's been studies showing the gain of the economic benefit to cultural, just cultural venues. And I think it's more than people expect, and I think we are a part of that. With our gift shop, we've seen a huge increase in people coming in the door. We're looking at ways, through some of the projects that we're taking this year, we're looking at more ways to increase our profile and to just get more people coming here and seeing that as, as I say, just another reason of many to come to Revelstoke.
Counselor English, have a question, and then Counselor Brothers, and I'll come back to the council.
More of a statement. Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, Kathy. You've engaged myself and my family since we moved to Revelstoke. You've always been there with information and history for us. Our family just appreciates what you do so much. I just really want to thank you.
Thank you. Besides that, we're not related.
No.
I'd just like to make a statement as well. Kathy, I think you and the museum are an incredible asset to this community, and I quite agree with you. I think maybe we've lost focus in using your resources to market our community. You know, I think you can go hand in hand with all of the economic development here and as part of the Economic Development Committee and Commission. I hope that going forward, we can spend more time using your resources and your ideas and everything else to improve the economic development in that part of our community and marketing that part of our community, because I think it's an incredible asset.
And just before I go back to Counselor Orlando, I just, too, Kathy, want to really emphasize that you have a really strong board, full of great ideas, and they actually celebrate and enjoy what they're doing, like with the garden. And I really like coming, having a cup of tea in the back in the old kitchen there. Like, it's just, really makes people feel at home, so good on you, all of you. Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, and one of the things that jumped off the page for me when I was looking at the Land of Thundering Snow exhibit was that drew in a $235,000 grant, which contributed to employment and work and also puts Revelstoke on a national stage through the virtual museum. So, I mean, I'm sorry to ask a leading question, but that's the kind of things I'm really impressed with, with you and everything else at the museum.
Thank you. I may just add one comment. I think the one thing that we need to improve is blowing our horn a little bit more. As part of that, I will be on CBC Radio tomorrow at, I think, about 7:25. They asked me to come on and speak about the Brown Bag History series and then about our upcoming book. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming today. Or how to know you. Okay, business arising from the minutes of March the 10th. Pages one, page two, page three, page four, and page five. No correspondence today, moving on to old business. I'm going to read a statement first.
Yeah, I have a conflict on the secretary of the public speaking.
So, under Old Business Kovach Park, last night, the special parks recreation and culture meeting was held to close the circle on the public engagement process with the neighborhood group involved in providing input into the design of Kovach Park. Counselor Brothers was the chair, and Counselor Salt provided support. I would like to thank both councillors for the dedication to the community and to this neighborhood. I would also like to acknowledge the neighborhood group for their earnest work in giving input into the design of the park. Staff have considered their comments, investigated them, and as a result, many of these suggestions have been implemented into site plan three. I have taken into consideration all the input from the community groups and other concerned citizens, as well as the recommendations by the many professionals charged with rendering their opinion on the Kovach site plan, and this council remains committed to going ahead with site plan three. During the meeting last night, the neighborhood group expressed concern that enforcement in the park would be difficult as the park does not have a closing time. In light of this suggestion, council have recommended a resolution be brought forward for consideration by council, and Counselor Brothers will speak to that.
I move that staff be directed to investigate establishing a closing time of Kovach Park and buy law enforcement options for park infractions and report back to council.
Seconder for that, Counselor Salt, any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Thank you, councillors, for your work. I'll have it. Moving on to 8B, Administration Heritage Advisory Commission Establishment Amendment Bylaw Number 2036, who wants to do this? Counselor Brothers, thank you.
Let Heritage Advisory Commission Establishment amend it by law number 2036 be adopted.
And a seconder for this, Counselor English. Any discussion, councillors? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. None closed. And 8C, Old Business Administration Heritage Design Bylaw Number 2057, 616, Third Street West, Mountain View School. Counselor Orlando?
Yes, I move that Heritage Designation Bylaw Number 2057, being a bylaw to designate a protected heritage property, received third read.
Seconder, Counselor English. Counselors, any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Thank you.
On the next one, I'll recuse myself as having solicited my relationship with the boards.
Thank you, Counselor Brothers. Okay, Item D, Administration Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 2065, Daria, who wants to do this?
I'll do that.
Counselor Salt?
Add zoning amendment by law number 2065, being a bylaw to allow for vacation rental use be adopted.
Seconder for that, Counselor English. Any discussion, councillors?
I shouldn't be in here with this one either.
Oh, Counselor Scott, we should have helped you with that.
Get it a little bit.
Our bad. Okay, I'm going to call the question, councillors. We still have a quarter. All in favor? Thank you. We're on Item 8B, Old Business Administration Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 2066, addition to microbrewery. Who wants to turn that forward? Counselor Orlando?
Yes, I move that zoning amendment, that zoning amendment by law number 2066, being a bylaw to include microbrewery use in C4 highway commercial district be adopted.
Seconder on this motion, Counselor English. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. And now we're on Item F, Administration Council Procedure Amendment Bylaw Number 2070. Counselor Brothers?
I move that Council Procedure Amendment Bylaw Number 2070 be adopted.
Seconder on this, Counselor Salt. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Moving on to New Business, and Item 9A, Administration Council Appointed to High Tech Task Force.
I can bring this forward. I would like to move that Counselor Orlando be appointed to the High Tech Task Force.
Seconder on this, Counselor Salt. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Okay, Development Services 2014 Year End Report.
Bring this forward. I move that Development Services 2014 Year End Report be received.
Seconder on this, Counselor English. Discussion on this, Counselor Scott.
Yeah, I'd just like to note, this has been for people that haven't seen this work, and it's quite good to take a look at it, you see how things have changed from 2013 to 2014 here in Revelstoke here. So, just a couple things to note, that we did 231 building permits in 2014, up from 137 in 2013, and that our permit values are up by 47%, 4.5 million up in 2014. So those are good things. Lot stuff going through for those guys, they're working on their customer service, and if you look at the processing times, we're pretty much, every permitting has been improved. So kudos to the Development Department.
And I'd just like to second that. Kudos to the Development people that work hard for the city of Revelstoke. Thank you, Mr. Strachan and your team. Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, at the risk of being repetitive, you know, to summarize at a really high level, there is a real big focus on customer service and customer service improvements. And I think that's what a lot of people talked about in the fall of last year, and it's really great to see lots of positive steps moving forward towards that. So thank you so much.
Going to call the question, councillors. All in favor of receiving? Carries.
Okay, for this next one, I'll catch myself before it's too late here. This is to do the vacation rentals as well. We run a relationship on the business, so I will recuse myself.
I would like to bring this.
I'll do this.
Thank you, Counselor Scott.
Development Services, 500 Townley Street, at the official community plan amendment application to amend the designation of Lot 8, Plan 12148, 500 Townley Street, from urban reserve to rural residential, to be supported to proceed with an amendment by
And we can record the next.
We were going to bring two.
Oh, we're going to bring you two? Okay, thank you. A seconder for this part. Counselor English. And... And we're gonna have your presentation first, Mr. Strachan, or can we call the question on this?
It's up to you, Your Worship. People are open to call the question.
I'm gonna call the question on it just to keep it clean. Councillors, ready for a question on this? All in favor? Carries. And then you're gonna give us your presentation, and then we'll do the second part. Is that correct?
That'll work.
That'll work?
Absolutely.
Wanna make it work?
Thank you, Your Worship. That is noted, it is an official community plan amendment application as well as a rezoning application. It's a little bit unique in that we have a rezoning application to rezone an entire subdivision, a proposed future subdivision, to a zoning district that will allow for vacation rentals. So essentially, what we would have is a number of lots that will have vacation rental use as an allowable use prior to your subdivision happening. So each of these lots, if people purchase the lots or develop these lots, will know that their neighbors have that opportunity already in place. So it's somewhat unique in that way. The proposal is to subdivide the property into nine large lots, I mean, RR04 zoning district. Staff have recommended that this take place through a strata subdivision. Thank you, Your Worship.
Councillors, any questions for Mr. Strachan? Councilor Salz?
Yes, Your Worship. Mr. Strachan, just in dealing with these, do we know the types of buildings that would be built on these properties, or is that still up for a presentation and that sort of thing? Would they be registered as multi-home type property because they're 1.4 hectares? Or are we gonna have one home built on there with multiple units or multiple rooms for vacation rental?
Your Worship, we would only allow for vacation rental within a single-family dwelling. We don't allow for the multi-family dwellings. So it would only be permitted, plus the zone itself would be a single-family dwelling. So you would see a single-family home on each one of these lots, possibly with some additional accessory buildings, shops. Thank you, Mr. Strachan.
So, Mr. Strachan, just to be clear, those roads and services would be the responsibility of the department owner?
Your Worship, the subdivision application itself has not been yet submitted. We have a preliminary subdivision design that's been provided. In reviewing that design, staff were concerned about the length of road compared to the number of units, as well as the number of turns and moves in that road and how the servicing underneath would interact. So we would recommend that it become a strata road, which would be owned by the strata property owners, essentially making it a private driveway with emergency access for city, of course. And those pieces of infrastructure that are in that roadway would also belong to the strata. It would be their responsibility. Couple of reasons for it. One is the complexity of the road system itself. We'll see on the drawing here what's required because of the topography and a couple of gullies that are located. But also the length and the width of that road and the amount of pavement, embedding and surface begins to feed into, Mr. Thomas was working with asset management, and the number of units, the number of taxpayers that are serviced by that road, and how in the long term it's going to cost the city to maintain and replace it in the future. So that is a staff recommendation. It would not come as part of this particular component of it through the OCP amendment and the rezoning, but we wish to notify council that through a subdivision approval process, we would be required to say.
Councilor Brothers.
Mr. Strachan, do you have any concerns about having sort of a lot? I take it that all of these will be open to vacation rentals?
Your Worship, yes, we do support that kind of initiative. And one of the reasons is, is that people are buying into a neighborhood knowing, eyes wide open, that their neighbors are gonna have this opportunity. So in some ways, this actually is the best scenario. And I've had experience with secondary suites in that type of a former, where you have a whole neighborhood that automatically has secondary suites in each one. So anybody that's purchasing knows that their neighbor is likely gonna have a secondary suite. The same would apply here, that you would know that your neighbor is going to have the opportunity for a vacation rental, and could pursue that when you purchase the lot. So there's no, nothing about a used being, parachuted into your neighborhood. This is something that's established in advance of the development taking place. So you make that decision as to whether you would purchase or build on a lot, knowing that that, so it's an ideal situation from a rent-revenue point of view.
And just, you know, playing the devil's advocate, just from a, you know, a community point of view, do we have concerns about having whole blocks that are possibly, and everybody talks about dark windows and everything else? Just from a planning point of view and your experience in that regard?
Your Worship, there is not a mechanism in place at this point in time to protect from dark windows. The planner that comes up with that initiative is probably gonna make many planning awards, because every Canadian in Western Canada is trying to wrestle with that issue. From our perspective, we're really looking to other communities that are spending significant resources to try and address this issue for hopefully some solutions. At this time, the single-family dwellings will be owned by an individual or a group of individuals. Whether they stay at that house or not is very difficult to control. How do you force someone to be in residence for a certain period of the year to prevent that dark window scenario? So there isn't a tool on the market or a tool out there that's been created to address that issue. There's lots of work that's been done to study the impacts that dark windows have. Just for the rest of the councils in the audience, the idea behind dark windows is the idea that people will purchase a home and only stay in it for a limited part of the year. The rest of the year, they're living in Alberta or in Pong Springs or some other place, and their house stays vacant. And so that house or that number of units is not contributing to the local economy for a period of the year. And many resort communities deal with this issue, both winter ski resort communities like Red Listo pass, or the reverse in the summer, but also vacation summer communities such as the Okanagan. It's been an issue for going on fifteen, twenty years that people have wrestled with, and there is not yet a solution in this context.
Councilor Brothers, one more.
One more, one more. Just following up on that, did we not have sort of a cap on the number of vacation rentals that are in Red Listo? I mean, does this sort of form part of, within that cap?
Your Worship, we recommended that council not establish a cap. Each individual rezoning application offers the council an opportunity to say, we wanna stop, we wanna reevaluate the whole program. Our commitment to council is to return to council in July, which is after one year, provide a report summarizing the number of vacation rentals that have been legalized within the community, the number of bylaw enforcement complaints we've received on vacation rentals since the program was established. So since there was a way to legalize, essentially, and what the effect has been, as well as the financial analysis, also comparing with bylaw enforcement, costs are compared to fees that are collected for businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Okay, we're gonna move on to the second part of that motion. Please, Councilor Salz, do you want to continue yourself?
That zoning bylaw text amendment application to add the subzone RR0.4B, rural residential, 0.4 hectare zoning district, vacation rental for the zoning bylaw be supported to proceed with an amendment by law. And that the rezoning application to rezone Lot Eight, Plan 12148, 500 Townley Street, from RR60 rural residential, 60 hectare zoning district, to propose new subzone RR0.4B, rural residential, 0.4 hectare zoning district, vacation rental be supported to proceed with the rezoning by law.
Seconder on that motion, Councilor English. Any discussion, councillors? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Anybody, Councilor, could you? We're moving on to item nine D, Economic Development Tourism Infrastructure. Recommendations, we're bringing these through separate motions. The first one, who's turning that forward?
I'll do that.
Okay, Your Worship.
High Economic Development Tourism Infrastructure Advisory Committee recommendations that funding in the amount of $10,000 from the Resort Municipality Initiative funds to the Red Listo ATV Club to assist with the development of the trail to Stroke Mountain be approved.
Seconder for that motion, Councilor English. Any discussion on that, councillors? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Next motion?
I'll carry on, Your Worship. That funding in the amount of $20,000 from the Resort Municipality Initiative funds to the Red Listo Riders Dirt Bike Club for further development of trails at the Dirt Bike Facility be approved.
Seconder on that, Councilor English. Any discussion, councillors? Councilor Orlando.
Yeah, I just wanna take a minute to celebrate some of the good news. Here I had a chance to talk to Chris Kowalski from the Dirt Bike Club, all the awesome stuff they're doing, he's so excited as usual, and the work, this is part of ongoing work that they're doing, that's bringing in a lot of attention and a lot of people into town, and I think it's a great initiative and very supportive of it.
And Chris Kowalski is a very hard worker on that initiative. Ready for the question, councillors? All in favor? Carries. Next motion?
That funding in the amount of $25,000 from the Resort Municipality Initiative funds to the Red Listo Performing Arts Center to assist with the development of the lobby, boy, signage, and help cover the cost of art disneys to be approved.
Seconder for this one, Councilor Orlando. Any discussion, Councilor Brothers?
The only thing, I'd just like to add a comment, because I am on this committee, and all of these initiatives are just unbelievably great initiatives for this community, and just dealing with the performing arts, I mean, this signage will transform that whole area and really showcase what a great, great place that is.
Good. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. On to the next one.
That funding in the amount of $20,000 from the Resort Municipality Initiative funds to the Red Listo Visual Arts Center for landscaping improvements between the center and Victoria Road be approved.
Seconder, Councilor Orlando. Any discussion, Councilor Brothers?
Again, I'll just comment that it did come before council, and we did see the pictures. And again, that whole area around, around there will be transformed, and it will be a real nice entrance to the community, and again, it will showcase our visual arts center, so really great initiative.
Yep, good work by a lot of volunteers. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Moving on to item E, Economic Development 2015 Work Plan. Who wants to turn it over to Councilor Brothers?
Let the Community Economic Development Department Work Plan for 2015 be approved.
Seconder, Councilor English. Comments? Questions? Discussion?
Excellent, I can comment on it. It's a very, very thorough document, there's a lot of stuff going on there. Anyone wants to take the time to read through it, it'll give you some insight as to what's gonna be happening in the community, and how we're working for it in an economic development capacity to bring more stuff in, support the businesses and events and things we have going on now.
Slowly down. Ready for the question, councillors? All in favor? Carries. Moving on to F, Economic Development, Columbia Basin Trust Local Initiative. Who will bring this forward? Councilor Brothers.
That funding allocations from the CBT affected areas and local initiatives program 2015, as recommended by the Program Evaluation Committee, be approved. Okay, carries. Let staff be directed to write a letter to the members of the Program Evaluation Committee thanking them for their work in evaluating the projects, and let the Director of Community Economic Development be authorized to sign the funding basis with due recipients.
Seconder for this, Councilor English. Any discussion, councillors? On all this money being given out by CBT? Okay, and just, there was something like over $700,000 in requests and $300 and some thousand dollars to give out, so it was a very difficult job for the Program Evaluation Committee to come up in a fair way of supplying the money. So thank you to all the people on that committee for their work. Councillors, ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. Finance grant to names, Councilor Salz.
Sure.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay. The following grants for 2015 be awarded. A number of grants has came to the Finance Committee, and this seemed to be appropriate, so they're, they're in front of us here.
And a seconder on this, Councilor English. Any comments? Questions, councillors? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carries. And next item on our agenda.
I'll recuse myself as I'm on the Board of Directors of Community Connections.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Brothers. Councilor Salz, do you want to do this one?
Yes, sure. Public Works Century Valon, that staff advise the Social Development Committee in the Red Listo Theater Company that there is no surplus space available in the Century Valon Building, and that the Century Valon Building will continue to be used for City of Red Listo's storage.
Seconder on this, Councilor Scott. Discussion on this? Councilor Orlando.
Your Worship, I guess my feeling on this are a few key points. I see clearly here staff saying that we have a need for storage space and that that's what the Century Valon Building is being used for right now. I do, however, have another feeling that using that building, which is pretty close to downtown in a retail location, isn't the best, highest and best use of a prominent building. It sort of looks like an empty storefront for visitors and residents. That building came to be used as a storage space, as it notes in the report in 2008. Sort of a long story, but it sort of fell into use as a storage space, and I'd like to explore some other options. I don't, I know there was two proposals here. One of them was for storage, which I don't really think is the best use of it, and another one is for Community Connections, entrusted in food bank space. I'd like to see that idea go forward. I feel that it would be good if we could have a discussion as a community, as a staff, perhaps, on what we could use the building for and what the best planning direction for that would be. And this original, the original request from Community Connections came through the Social Development Committee, and the idea there was, was, I believe, to bring some capital and some rents to the table for this building. And I don't want to see that die right here, because I don't think we've had enough discussion with the people involved, so I'd like to see this continue to move forward. Now, I know there's also a question of long-term planning for this building, what's it gonna be in 25 years, or 50 years, or 15 years from now? So I think that's something that staff needs to work out. I'm not sure how the short-term ideas and long-term goals mesh together, but I would like to put this back to staff, maybe, and Development Services is my suggestion, to see if we can, to work it out. I'd like to see what other councillors.
So just to keep it clear, Councilor Orlando will vote on the first motion, and then you can make the second motion. Would that be okay? Councilor Salz, did you?
I just wanted to state similar to what Councilor Orlando has stated, that I would like to see go back to staffing for their advice as to other uses for this facility, and to investigate why the facility was purchased in the first place, as to what previous council members had thought long-term in purchasing this company.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the question on the first motion. And councillors, ready for the question? All those in favor? And those opposed? Now I'll take the second motion, the English opposed, Councilor Orlando.
That the future use of the Century Valon Building, we refer to development staff for a broad scope exploration of its future use. for, um, a broad scope exploration of its future use, and that staff continue discussions, uh, with, um, the proponent, gather information from community futures as to their ideas as part of that exploration.
Community futures or...
Community connections, Red Listo society.
Yes. Thank you. And, um, so just for clarity and now that staff continue to use it for storage at present, am I understanding you correctly? Okay. Seconder on that motion, Counselor Saltz. Any discussion on that, Counselors? All those in favor? Harry's. Thank you. Can I invite Counselor Brothers to have a opinion? Okay, moving on to communications, and you can stop me on the way through or at the end, whichever you prefer. If you have any questions or statements you wish to make, tourism infrastructure advisory minutes, Red Listo Advisory Committee on Healthcare Minutes, Economic Development Committee Minutes, Finance Committee Minutes, Red Listo Canaria Economic Development Commission Minutes, Parks and Rep Culture Minutes, Fire Department Muckin Report, and Fire Prevention Muckin Report. Just, I just want to make a statement there. Fire Chief Rob, your name came up at CSRD as a fire department that's ready to respond to a CPR train coming in with a fire on their wheels, so well done.
Thank you, Lopez.
Good to hear you guys mentioned at CSRD.
Lopez, head on to the party.
Business License Summary and Check Requisition Report. Questions from the press? David Rooney today?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I have a question with regards to the decision, um, regarding, uh, Kovach Park. I'd like to know which, what, uh, what element of the two plans was the deciding factor for the committee reaching that decision?
For it to come back to council, Mr. Rooney, that was my decision, sitting as the acting mayor to bring it back. And listening to the reports from last night, I have in-depth reports from, um, Ms. D'Nado and from the Staff Sergeant of the OCP and the planner, and, uh, it's a measurable safety difference, which might not sound like much to people, but when we have professional staff on our table and they come forward with the recommendation, and there's a measurable difference, I go into safety first, and that's why I decided not to leave it there.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. That's it for me.
Alex today?
Well, I got to follow up on something you said there. Um, you mentioned you talked to, um, Laurie D'Nado and, uh, Staff Sergeant Pravinsky. Did you speak to any Southside residents before?
No, I remained unfettered. I did not go to the meeting. Counselor Brothers took the chair, and Counselor Saltz went to support her, and then I had written reports and I had minutes for the meeting. I had in writing reports, not just a verbal conversation. And who, Emily? Nothing to pick? Okay. Alex, you have another question?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a motion to go in camera facility sections now?